Who called the meeting to order? We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, which is in our name, under God, and with due diligence, and for which it is just a horrible and terrible place.
Do you have any additions or conditions that need to adopt tonight's agenda?
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda. My second.
In favor?
Aye.
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 And approve the minutes for 4:11:22.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for 4:11:22. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment? We don't have any. Would you still like to read?
Yeah.
I just wanted to set the tone for future. So we're going to start reading this at the beginning for public comment. "In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board is not allowed to discuss items that are not on the agenda and will not engage in the public -- excuse me, with the public during public comment. The Board will direct the superintendent to follow up on any items that arise during public comment as appropriate."
Thank you, Jen. Just wanted to add two items. Okay, calendar survey.
Yeah, so we had a calendar committee that met, a combination of staff, well, classified, certificateed parents in the community. We met four times and came up with two different drafts. And we sent out the survey to families and asked two questions. Out of the survey respondents, we had 256, which was a really good turnout for Cleone, or typically our conferences, maybe because they only had to answer two questions and it was really quick. And Sarah did a little Instagram post again on Facebook and webpage. We had 82.25% of the respondents say that draft one was their preference on the calendar. And for those of you who remember, we had two very different drafts. One was before Labor Day, the other one was after Labor Day. And clearly, after Labor Day is the preference. We had 57.6% of respondents when we asked them about conferences. The committee went back and forth about what's a nice spot to land conferences. One full non-student day and one half-day, 57.6%. Thought that that was the best way for conferences. And 42% said that they would prefer four half-days. So draft one is the overwhelming calendar.
So on the 3D, I make a motion that we approve draft number one, the calendar for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda.
Yeah, so we have a few resignations. Sheran, our head cook, has been a head cook and has submitted a resignation for the end of the school year. Josh Johnson, our high school science teacher, has also submitted a resignation at the end of the school year. And Shannon Sawyer, second grade teacher. For retirement, Marie Hock has finally decided to retire. She's been a custodian for 16 years and she wants to be a mister. And we certainly appreciate your service to our students and students.
Thank you, Marie, for your service. And I make a motion to approve those. Rep? Your resignations and retirements as red. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll start with our enrollment. This month, for April, our average enrollment is 862.40. So it's up a couple more from last month. So moving on to our budget status reports. We have a general fund. We have unreserved ending fund balance of $2,345,507.63. And our capital projects fund, we have $3,345,183.18. Our debt service fund, we have $18,566.59. Our ASV fund, we have $164,948.32. And our transportation vehicle fund, we have $138,098.63. And then our AP for the month, we have payroll $933,407.50. Our general fund, it's $419,219.16. Our ASV AP was $2,737.82. Capital projects was $97,690.05. So our total AP for the month is $1,453,054.53.
Thank you.
I move we accept and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, mission for board policy.
So we have two policies, electronic resources and policy and procedure. And the first board policy, there is no change. With the WAS, it's updated. And then the electronic resources is our first read with the procedure. And looking with Jimmy, our director of technology, we have one add to it on the second page, and it would be under E. It talks about vandalizing, cracking, hacking. It doesn't talk about ransomware. So we are adding the word ransomware, which seems to have been very popular with schools the past two years. So that's our only add on those two policies, that policy.
Second read on curriculum development.
So the policy is our second read on the policy, which is similar to what we had prior. It's the procedure, which is 2020P, that we had some discussions about, which have been very helpful. So on our -- Jen and Gar and I did the pre-meeting and plus some feedback we had from board members and some staff members, actually, which, and the administrators, have all submitted some recommendations. So you can see in our second one for the read, we added in green. So under existing courses, we added the course design review cycle. We ensure that every content area is reviewed, every three to five-year rotating cycle. So we just added a descriptor that kind of matched our whole policy. And then at the bottom of that first page, the course design review cycle, you can see, it doesn't spell out every single category, but it's broad areas, some music, social emotional learning. And so we have pushed out a five-year cycle on that. On the back of that page, we did have a couple of questions about social studies. It's -- I just want to remind people that with the new RCW, Sense Time Memorial, that actually is an RCW. It's not determined by a school district when we adopt some of the Sense Time Memorial curriculum. So that's actually standing RCW policy. So those were the changes based on our conversations that we thought might mirror some of our, what we talked about before. The only thing I want to draw your attention, this was a good question, was on the very last page, that policy, it says field testing. That's AKA piloting. Piloting is not mandatory. It costs a district a lot of money to pilot every time you pilot something in policy. But field testing is what we reference when we think about using material for a while before we go into a sweeping adoption. So that's the term field testing in the pilot conversation.
It's a good distinction. And the field testing, like how we choose that is determined by the curriculum, either yourself or who you designate as the curriculum leader?
Yeah, so the policy and the procedure has, by law, you have to have an instructional materials committee. They don't dictate when it is. It's kind of grassroots. You want teachers to say, hey, look, we were reviewing curriculum. We want to try some things out. Then they would come to the districts, to the building principals, and then we determine that. The instructional materials committee in here that I'm at only adopts it and recommends it to the board for final adoption. They don't talk about pilots. It's kind of grassroots with teachers making that choice with the building administrator.
I appreciate the changes, though.
Yeah, it's good conversation, thank you.
We're on second read, so we need a motion.
And we need a motion to accept that if there's no more discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2020, the policy and procedure, both of them, as red. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Superintendent, important.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Before getting started, we have settled on both contracts, so PSC and SRE. So those are online. And I'm proud of the work that went into that. And it was long, arduous, but it was really good conversation. So a good spot. I'm very proud of the staff members who fell in there and we got through it. Second thing is, we had a week of amazing early learning roundup. Kindergarten registration is May 7th? 5th? I had to look for dates, no, my calendar's broken. So we have kindergarten registration coming up. And with the technology team, they're trying to get everything up. Susie Martin is spearheading the online registration. So we're really excited about that. So that'll make registration process easier and get rid of some paper. But to see so many families coming into our district and little kids coming in. Carrie Anne and her team did a phenomenal job greeting families. They got little backpacks, the kids put them on, and they drug behind them because they're so tiny. And then just to see Swift Water Learning Center, they made the meals and they also helped be part of process with students. And it was so great just to see their leadership and how they dug in and helped that work and stepped up and created some of the meals. And it was such a family welcoming atmosphere for people to be able to start into our district that way. So it was heartwarming. So I want to thank the team. And I know Donna put in lots of hours putting everything together and everyone at the district office for helping out. It was really great. Couple of things, moving into the WGU. We did not have on file a Western Governors University agreement for student teachers, and we do have student teachers. So this is a letter just indicating that we are in partnerships with WGU for student teachers. Work, I want to move on to 6B. So work study. We talked a little bit about with all the extra board meetings for the superintendent search, that we're canceling the May 9th meeting. So I just wanted to remind everybody to get off their calendars. You'll have lots of late nights coming up with the new superintendent search process. You'll be here three nights in a row. And don't forget Friday for screening. I have applicants for that as well. So I just wanted to remind everybody about May 9th for that meeting. There was a conversation with the applicants. I talked to Gar briefly about it. You have a lot of applicants, so I'll be giving you all of those right now. So we can talk about the superintendent's search timeline and where we're at. So if you click on that attachment about the timeline, that's really the interview schedule. So May 16, 17, and 18, you have three full days and evenings for superintendent interviews. One of the conversations I had with Gar is, you have a lot of applicants, actually. So I'm going to give you all the applicants. You don't have to go through them now, but I'll hand you your package. So it's your confidential packet. And I FedExed, Claire, you should get yours tomorrow at 4:30. So I've got that today for you. Let me know if you don't. So I'm going to pass these out for you right now. Claire, you can pretend you have one in your hand. So these are all your applicants. So you have quite a few.
It's amazing what two weeks.
Superintendents are professionals. So I want to talk a little bit about, you have quite a few applicants. And as you go through them, I know we're meeting Friday morning. You're meeting with Northwest Associates to kind of review those. But in your packet, I put a couple of things together for you. One is, you have sheets, sorry, it's pretty long, that it'll help you kind of keep track of who the applicants are with some different columns to keep notes, keep notes however you want. But it might be easier to at least be able to go through those on Friday morning and have that spelled out for Friday morning. So use it if you want or delete it. If you want it electronically, let me know and I can do it too. The other one is, you receive in your packet this profile. It's all the survey results from the community and staff about what they're looking for in the next superintendent. So you'll have all that information in the survey to be able to reference that as well. The date, 16, 17, and 18 is spelled out. But the question might be, as a board, do you want to target the date the Saturday prior? I think it's May 7, where it would be Zoom. And if you want, like, let's say you wanted six people to interview. You narrowed it down to six. You couldn't narrow it down any further to three. You could do a 30-minute, kind of a round robin Zoom if you were the six that you narrowed it down to. So it'd be 30 minutes each. It would be a Zoom. You wouldn't have to come. It could hook you up via Zoom or you could have a spot at the district office or one of the buildings if you wanted to come and Zoom in a room. That's an option if you feel on Friday that you have too many and you can't narrow it down to three. So I just wanted to have that conversation so you have that information and start thinking about it. I know it takes up yet another one of your days as board member. And it's a lot of days and nights that you'll have invested in this process. But I also know that you're deeply invested in making sure you have the next right person for the position and you want to do a thorough job. So just so you don't have to limit yourself if you're thinking, are there, do we have to add other days to those three days? And a lot of school districts are doing that. They're doing like a round robin, sort of an hour or 30 minutes. It'd be nine questions. Okay? Yes, vaping. So how many of you have heard about the vaping lawsuit that's happening across the United States? Okay. So this is just a conversation. If you choose, you know, that's a route we want to take, then I'm happy to pursue it. So Stevens Clay Law Firm is doing a pro bono for all districts in the state of Washington to join a lawsuit. They have 600 school districts in about 30 states joining the lawsuit. The lawsuit is to really hold Juul, the company Juul and e-cigarettes, responsible for accountability for the addiction. You know, you've done a lot of research on the community, David. And Ms. Sanger has come in and talked about this with high school students, the addictiveness of it and the health impacts. And I know Swift Water Learning Center and some students at the high school have really done some extensive research on the topic. So it'd be pro bono. If the district decides to go that way, you jump on. And then whatever is deemed a settlement, if that's the case, then they donate out to the districts. And what it goes to is to help support education, resources, and materials. And perhaps it's helping to offset the cost of some substance abuse counseling supports and services. So it's a lot of information. So I tried to do a little summary so that you can see the summary. And then the last two pages is the fact sheet. So it gives you a lot of pretty important facts that are happening. I know we had some situations here even last year, in fact. And Ms. Sanger was really talking to the students about the impacts of the vape with heat. And they call it popcorn. Isn't that what you guys call it? Popcorn on it. And we had some students that have some substantial impacts as a result of it because of being addicted so young and singeing of your lungs that are happening because of the heat of the vape when you get to vaping. So some pretty significant damages that are happening at a younger and younger age with vaping. Happy to answer any questions. I'm not an expert in the lawsuit, but I think there's some really good intentionality behind it.
This is separate from the lawsuit filed by our attorney general, correct? This is separate issue?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Do we know if we had much of a problem in our schools with vaping? We do? Do we know? Okay.
Especially at the middle schools. At the middle school.
They can hide it easily and they, yeah.
And part of the lawsuit, too, goes to, and this can be controversial, but certain detection of vaping. And I know that Ms. G B and I have been talking about that. But there's certain vape detection you can do because the smell is masked. And so some of this can go into education, the technology, software. And a school district gets to decide depending on how much money comes through. But it's, I mean, it's addictive. And I think kids would say it's more highly addictive than smoking cigarettes was.
What do we have in place as a district already to combat the issue that exists?
We have education classes through health. Our health classes talking about it. We have some support groups. We did the Red Ribbon League, Jaden, and we got groups of kids together. Did you guys present this year at the state? I know that got canceled again. It did.
Middle school.
Middle school. Middle school. And then I know Kathy has done a lot of pushing, small group support as well. It's pretty significant, the amount of personnel it takes to be with kids and families. And I think the family education piece, too, is an important piece to this, right? It's education, not just the students, it's staff, the families as well. How do you deal with it? There are some signs to look for.
Do we have any plans to update our facilities with that in the future? With the vape detection, vape control in the future?
There's no plan in place. There's been lots of conversations. So lots of school districts are starting to do that right now. So that's all of us in the conversation. There's no set plan to do that.
Are there other resources besides the award from this lawsuit out there for us to reach out to, to help us?
Not that I'm aware of, actually. Are you aware of any funding sources to help support?
We tried to get one, but there's a lot. You know, you guys would have to approve it. And we need to have student education pieces, everyone supporting it, as well as parent education pieces. So I actually had a meeting with staff and Kathy Sanger. And then we have an opportunity coming up also for a parent as well.
And I have to say Kathy Sanger is a little hidden gem in our district. She is phenomenal. And she does such a fantastic job. Kids, she had a box that she started at the high school. I don't think Swift Water has one, I don't look to Sarah. But at the high school, kids could drop them anonymously, right? So she's done a lot of programs to really get kids to be able to trust her, say, look, this isn't, I caught you doing it wrong. This is for me to help you break a habit. And how can I help you with that? So super approachable with the kids. Kids trust her, kids go to her. So we're really lucky in that part. Some districts have people that kids just never have that trust. Kathy's very networked. Kathy's networked around the county.
I'm going to assume the answer's no, but is she available to push down to the middle school since it's personal experience? And it sounds like middle school is where it's struggling. I'm assuming no, because it sounds like she does quite a bit at the high school.
She's at the elementary school.
We got several groups in the middle school. She's going to push in to classes as well. And she's going to help with the parent resources, middle school parents about support and education.
And elementary. Something started earlier at the elementary levels that we haven't seen in years. She's worked closely with David and Anna about that.
Is there a deadline for us to do it?
Yeah, like at the end of this month.
Because reading the concerns of forejoining, it doesn't sound like there's a downside. It sounds like it's something we really should do. It's free to join and potentially we would get a warrant. And at the very least, I think it's a good message to say like in solidarity with other schools. So should we do a resolution and approve a motion that will allow our school district to join the vaping lawsuit?
Well, we have six months before we have to make the decision.
No, we said this one. They just pushed it out again and said, hey, hop on. The time is short.
So I think we should hop on. What do you guys think? I think if there's no cost, I mean, there's not, it's not going to take staff resources or monetary resources.
It'll take a little staff time, but not a lot. Like you guys saw, five hours.
Oh, for the application. I can do that one.
For the application.
So I move that the board authorize our superintendent to join this lawsuit against Juul.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student representative for the board. Jaden, you're up.
Yay. All right. Up eight. We're working still on our plant sale. Our plants are now, instead of in a little window, they're in the greenhouse now. Our students went on Northwest Truck Field Trip this last Thursday. And what that was is they went and they set up the habitats for the bears. And then got to watch the behind-the-scenes training of a crazy bear and then got to two movies. And then, as Michelle mentioned, so far helped with the early learning roundup. Sarah and Solz catered, and then we have forced students kind of helping with all those guys. And then we started working on, every morning, everyone works together and works on that. Upcoming dates we have is we have a hiking trip up to Uptown Creek Falls. We're really following planning. We're trying to, I think it's every other week, we're trying to go hiking to prepare for the Seon Island trip because we're going to do a lot of hiking. And then there's the WSU Field Trip. And then a few students have the opportunity to go to the miniature race conference in Seattle. We have a couple of younger girls who have been really interested in construction and building stuff and getting to race. So I'm really, really excited for those guys. And then we have an opportunity to go to another detail student conference in Tanas. Super excited about that. That'll be really fun. Last we have, it's absolutely been exciting to see the [inaudible]. And then to prepare for the Seon Island trip, we have a first date and CPR course coming up soon. So to make sure that all of our students who are going are going to be appreciative of something that's certified.
Do you have your countdown calendar? Are you more excited about graduation or your trip?
Trip.
Trip. Graduation.
Thank you. Any board comments to you?
I have a bunch, but I didn't want to. If anybody else have any?
No.
A lot of fun things happened at the high school today. I was actually invited to join Mr. Bell's Natural Resources and his first period class, which I wrote down, but now I can't read it on my own notes here. Environmental Science Group. They had Papay Machinery come in and do a technician job shout out. Apparently Papay, who owns John Deere, it's Papay Ag and Turf. There's that difference of categories, but Ag and Turf owns John Deere. And the local John Deere stores will pay for anyone who wants to become a technician. And then we'll send them to a two-year school, graduate with a diesel mechanic degree. And then they have to work for Papay for two years, but then that can transfer to any diesel mechanic job in the country. They have something like 800 stores between Mexico, Alaska, Hawaii. So wherever you want to live and then you can apply at that store. That store will then reimburse your schooling when you go to school, you get on the job training. Which is kind of cool because several of the individuals in the class wanted to be either heavy equipment, ag and construction related jobs were interests of the people in the class. And so it was kind of fun to hear the different ways that that could translate throughout Papay. But then after that four-year time period, they can take that anywhere. So they are not just committed to Papay. And then the presentation was short, so I'm actually got to hear about the GMO projects that the environmental ser, classes are doing. And apparently there is a rose pineapple coming out and I'm very excited. It's only grown in Costa Rica, but it's a pink pineapple and it's really exciting. And I had a lot of fun talking about the different things that one student was able to, she's like, you know, I've always heard GMO and ignored it, but now I actually understand what the hype behind it was. I'm not sure I'm changing my life over it, but I respect what the story was. And another one was researching the difference on cotton. That GMO cotton seed was causing allergic reactions in the processors and the farmers. But he wasn't sure if it was related to where that seed was grown versus not. And so, and then I learned how to calculate lumber, lumber calculations, when you go on timber calculations, like linear feet and trees, like apparently they don't just pick random trees. It was, I think I was the most excited in class. Like, oh, let's go. So that was fun. It was also fun because it's their first week of dodgeball, so they have theme today with Yuki versus Farmers.
Is that why you're dressed in your suit?
Country versus country club.
Country versus country club. Thank you.
I'm country.
Yes. So it was fun to see everybody kind of in their costumes and doing that. And shout out, vaping is an interesting topic. Our FBLA team, Isabella and Kayden, made it to finals with their PSA related to vaping that they got to choose. They, at the beginning of the year, chose what they were going to do their PSA project on. They had made it to state all four years and then together they were able to go to finals this year. I did not hear back from Mr. Ratorc on how they placed, but they made it to state finals Saturday night.
I think 12.
12.
Top two.
Yes.
Tony told me they got to the top 10, but only the top four go to nationals.
Oh, okay. Either way, well done. All the kids did great. All the sports did great last week. And so it was pretty fun to see. And this week, they also have a movie night coming up. So it's been kind of fun to see what all the fun things they were working around in the high school.
Thanks, Lacey. Any other board comments? And we need to adjourn and move into executive session.